Allison gets in just in the nick of time.
We could tell it's over because this is...
Yeah. Too late. You know, the room is feeling pretty heavily weighted in that direction.
Hello Allison, how are you?
Best I get to stretch out over here.
Oh, before you two guys leave, I have to talk to you about one thing quickly.
Us too?
Yeah, your site plan people. South committee people.
Okay.
Committees, site plan committee people. Are we live Steve?
On time.
It's too bad the guy lost Paul. I was gonna like him. So the other guy's gone.
Yes.
He's got other things he had to do with his life. Stopped, put on my belt, like I lost my train of thought. So I've spent the day...
Keeps him from going a little bit.
Stay at his house. I think we're ready to go.
Good Steve?
Yeah, you can.
Not the older iPhone. He raised his hand. I thought that was the...
That was the one second hand.
Gentlemen, start your engines.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board for April 2nd, 2012. Jettie, can we have the roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Ms. Foye.
Here.
Ms. Bauer.
Mr. Hutt.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Ms. Guha.
Here.
Mr. Allen. Mr. Goldstein.
Okay, well, we have enough, but pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mailing the annual notice.
Hold on a second, I gotta push. I'm sorry.
Do we have to ask, are we starting again from the beginning?
We started.
Right.
I guess we can...
Unless we can...
There you go.
Actually, we have to now do a rewind, so we all have to try to remember.
Let's read the script supervisor. Put us on the right position.
So, do we know where we're going to be having our meetings when the town hall's undergoing renovations?
Nothing definitive yet. Probably so bad.
I think I have enough room at my house.
You mean all? But not true.
Probably, if there's nothing...
For the amount of people.
Actually, it's just Alyssa, there is enough room.
When does renovation start?
End of the summer.
End of the summer?
Yeah, end of the summer.
So how much? Are we going back historical in renovation or...
What's that? How far back are we?
We're good, alright.
We're good, alright. I'll start again. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board for April 2nd, 2012, and we'll do the roll call just in case it was missed.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Ms. Foye.
Here.
Ms. Bauer.
Mr. Hutt.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Ms. Guha.
Here.
Mr. Allen. And Mr. Goldstein.
Okay, thank you. Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2012 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2011 and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. Our first bit of business is the approval of the minutes of regular meeting held on Monday, February 6th, 2012, submitted by the secretary of the board. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, thank you, we'll pass the minutes. Next, we are going to work towards the approval of resolution for case number 216. The applicant is South Orange Commons III LLC, premises affected 925 West South Orange Avenue. This was heard for amended preliminary final site plan approval. We have the newly written resolution in front of us, and I thought by way of understanding it further, our counsel Patrick Dwyer can discuss perhaps the most newest part of it, which is the COA obligation solution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There have been a great deal, there has been a great deal of discussion about the affordable housing obligation for this project since the board voted to approve this application at the end of December involving the village's Affordable Housing Council, village's planner, as well as discussions with the other side about what that obligation should be. And it became the conclusion of the village that the original obligation for affordable housing that was set forth in the approval of December of 2002 was vested, that the obligation for this developer would be the same as it was then, and that was $240,000 that was set forth in the original approval. There have been a number of discussions about whether, how that would be paid, it was decided that it would be paid half upon pulling of permits and half upon issuance of CO. There was discussions as well, and Susan can help us understand that better, about what might have to be done in order for the village to protect itself, given that the obligation which is being presented here in this resolution is a little bit different from the town's affordable housing plan, which has been approved by COA. And apparently, there's a difference in the calculation number of units as opposed to assessed value of the property, so that the obligation when it was originally written in the original approval was based upon a $20,000 per unit, 12 units, we came up with $240,000. Subsequently, the ordinances in town were amended to change how that affordable housing contribution would be calculated, was based upon a percentage of the assessed value of the property. When the spending plan was submitted to COA, it followed that new ordinance, and so that the amount that was designated for this property was higher, it was 470 or so. But it still, the village's recommendation, and I agree, that the original amount and the original approval by this board will be vested, it will be what this developer's obliged to pay. So that's what this resolution now reflects. Now, since it's been distributed, there were a couple of changes based upon some comments that we received, some from planning board member Janine Bauer having to do with, and some from the applicant who has also seen a copy of this now. Let me just go through those if I may. One change had to do with the date on Exhibit 8A27. The date was inserted, that date has been added now to my new resolution which I had, it's not in yours, and that date for Exhibit 827 was November 22nd of 2011. The second change had to do with the number of parking spaces, and the applicant informs me that their plans indicated 142 were necessary, not 145 as the resolution had set forth, so I made that change. It's not much important because there's still a variance that was granted by the board. The third change had to do with Paragraph 7 of the resolution, in which it stated that in response to board questions, Mr. Drumel stated that retailers will have storage space, and the applicant has responded, and I believe it's right, that there were no separate storage space for the retail units, but that within their own retail space, they would have to provide their own storage. So I tried to clarify that, 7. And the final change had to do with a number of discussions that took place today, and it was to add to Paragraph 15 of the conditions having to do with affordable housing, a sentence which reads as follows. "The affordable housing obligation set forth herein shall be subject to the approval of COA and/or such other regulatory authority for affordable housing in New Jersey as may exist at the time of submission for approval." And the thinking there was that, again, because the spending plan has a slightly different number than what this resolution is offering, that we should get COA's blessing on, and that's what the village will...
Would you just read that, just that statement again?
Yes.
The additional sentence on Paragraph 15 of the conditions says, "The affordable housing obligation set forth herein shall be subject to the approval of COA and/or such other regulatory authority for affordable housing in New Jersey as may exist at the time of submission for approval." And the reason it's written that way is because COA was disbanded by Christie and then it was reinstated by the appellate division, so I'm saying whoever is in charge at that point, when that application's made, gets to approve or disapprove.
But if COA or whoever says, gee, the contribution is now $10, is that what the contribution is?
No, I think what, from what I understand, and Susan can say way in, they're going to ask probably that the village file an amendment to the plan and say, this is what the contribution would be for that site.
Because I can interpret the statement that you just read as, COA would now have the absolute authority to say what the dollar amount is.
Well, they have certain, excuse me, I just...
Go ahead.
They have certain regulations, particularly as it relates to spending plans. As much about the spending plan as it is on the amendment to the plan, because at this point in time, they aren't sure what they're going to do with amending the plans, but they still want to make sure that whatever funds are there for affordable housing, that they have some monitoring of those, how those funds are expended, to make sure they're properly expended. So that's really where this would come into play, because this particular site was within the spending plan for funding, and that's where, and Patrick explained why there was some variation in the amount, but it was in the spending plan.
No, no, I understand all that, but the way I read that sentence is if the village is counting on $240,000, COA has the explicit authority to change that, the way that I interpret. It seems, it seems unlikely that if the township approves $240,000, the original plan was for a higher amount, that they're going to turn around and say, no, it's $10. It's more likely that, given the current discussion of legislation at the state level, that, when what, you know, and what's being discussed in the debate over the budget, that they could just decide to capture money from municipal trust funds, like the one here in South Orange, and just take it for themselves in order to balance the budget or use it for whatever other state programs they may wish to do. But I have, if it's okay, I have two questions. One is, the plan is based upon, the township's plan is based upon both revenue and expenditures, and the expenditures are supposed to be able to produce a certain number of units. So the question is, if the township's plan called for $470,000 from this project, and we're now going to get $240,000 from this project, how would the township then, would the, let me put it this way, would the township be able, with the existing plan now changed for $230,000 less in revenue, be able to produce the number of units required under the spending plan that was approved?
A portion of the spending plan wasn't necessarily the creation of new units, it was also to create opportunities for what's called affirmative housing, so you write down existing affordable units, so they're more affordable. So, to the extent that they were projections as well, the revenues and the expenditures were, to a certain extent, projections, and there's an administrative cost as well in there, those projections are routinely modified based upon the market conditions. When most of these housing plans were adopted in municipalities throughout the state, as you know, it was a different economy at that point, and the projections across the board were optimistic compared to what the economy is now. So it is not unusual for municipalities at this point to go back and reassess those projections, to balance expenditures with revenues. Again, not all of it is the creation of new, of new units, as well as the fact that the whole methodology, as you know, is up for grabs. So what you thought was your, what you, what every municipality thought was their obligation isn't necessarily the obligation. So we're all operating in this kind of cloud of doing the best we can, not understanding necessarily what the direction is going to be. I don't know whether that's an answer, but it's the best...
It's a very, it's a very complicated environment, to say the least. My other question, I just want to go back to the language that's being added here, just to make sure I understand it. So, let's, let's say hypothetically that the resolution's adopted tonight, the, when, well, first of all, when will the new spending plan be reviewed by whomever? Like, is this sent down there immediately for their review? I mean, does it have to be adopted by the town council first? I mean, what is the, what is the process by which this will happen? And then the other part, the thing I want, really want to get at is, so we get through this whole process, spending plan's amended, sent down to COA, COA says, or DCA, or whomever it is, says, nope, we want the $470,000. So that means, just for clarification, then, that the developer is going to pay the other $230,000?
I mean, if it came to that, there is, there would be an obligation under this resolution, the way it's written, for the developer to pay what the obligation was. And if that obligation were changed for what's written here, then we're going to say, yes, the developer has to pay that.
Please agree to that?
There's, you know, they've read this, they didn't have any specific objection to the way it's written. I showed it to their attorney today, their applicant's attorney has read it, didn't have any specific objection to even the COA language, although I admit it wasn't their COA attorney, it was their applicant board attorney who read it. But he did have an opportunity to see it, and I think what, what maybe the board should also know is that the township has, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, been working on ways to use monies that are coming from this project and that are also within the fund at this point, to secure some new units by restricting them for low and moderate income housing for 30 years, at a fairly reasonable amount per unit, which would at least cover, if not exceed, what would be the obligation for this project.
So, I'm sorry, there was one part of my question I need. What is the process? I mean, what is the...
And what type, as part of that, I'm curious, is what do you feel the developer will be able to do in the near future, given this uncertainty?
Well, I think that there will be fairly, to answer the first question, I think that there will be a discussion fairly quickly with the appropriate village administration to determine exactly what needs to go to, I'll use the term COA, just, we've had a number of contacts with different people in COA, and there is a process, they've tried to streamline it, it's just a matter of getting it into their system. Again, it's much less burdensome than it had been.
But in real time, what would your best guess be?
Well, I don't know, because it depends on how much is linked in, because there are a number of moving parts in the village right now with respect to affordable housing, so it's a question as to whether it's going to be segregated by component, or whether it's going to be more broad-based in dealing with it. I suspect it will be more broad-based, and...
So there's, if you're, if what you're saying, then, there was a probably a pretty good chance that the village was going to try to amend its spending plan under any circumstances, and this would be part of it?
Exactly. That wouldn't be a surprise.
So do we have any reason, is there anything the developer can do in the meanwhile to continue his process? I guess he can still get approval down at Trenton for the project. Is that... I mean, I guess we're trying to, I mean, rather than the technical aspects of this particular language, what do you feel has, have, going to happen to the project? I mean, are we talking about six months before anything happens? A year?
I don't see that, I don't, actually don't see this as being particularly a roadblock.
It's not a critical path item, they can continue until...
I imagine if their intent is to go ahead and develop, that they will continue that process based on what's passed here tonight.
Further to Harold's question, I would assume the developer can always choose not to build if the dollars become onerous, or very frankly, attack it legally, which is always is right under the law. But just further, a couple of further questions. The wording in this Paragraph 15, payable as follows, 2100, I'm rounding, at the issuance of each building permit for each 57 units, aren't you, I mean, this is...
That was a wording that came from Village's Affordable Housing Council's office.
But that doesn't make sense to me. It makes absolutely no sense.
I didn't dare change it.
It's absolutely no sense, because you're building this, you're not building each individual department. I understand the...
I'm telling you what Village's Affordable Housing Council wrote for us.
No, I don't accept it. He wrote it, but I don't accept it.
But, I understand that it may be as a, it's going to be done in one phase, therefore that, you're going to pull the building permits for all the different units, but it traditionally is done by building permit, and it's, that's the trigger, that it's normally...
It just doesn't make sense.
Does this obligate the building?
I understand this in a condo development, where you're building individual units and you're pulling individual permits for that unit. Same way in there in the C of Os. Same thing goes for a C of O. I don't see how you're going to be able to get a C of O for apartment one, when apartment two next door is not up to fire codes and so forth. But that, but that does happen. That does happen. The first may not, but the second does. It does. I understand that, but legally, I'm not so sure if that's correct.
Well, that is...
Either way, if they apply... But let's deal with the first part. The first part makes no sense.
If they apply for one, if they apply for 57, we're covered both ways.
What's the harm, Michael? I mean, I mean, it's basically going to end up being a 50-50 split. It may seem strange, but is there a...
I guess the fifth side is just to make...
It may be strange, because it's not practical.
It's not practical, it's not...
If I voted against everything, I'd say it's strange.
It's not probable, but I just, I just have to be sure that he's not obligated to pull that many permits. I mean, I think something should be at least clear, that one permit will suffice, because it's not, it's not possible to pull that. It's not, it's nonsense.
I don't see, I'm not issuing apartments.
It's nonsensical, because you have no life saving, you know, you build...
It just makes no sense.
So it's okay to have it, as long as he's, he's not going to be hoisted on its horns of nonsense.
I don't think that that's the village's intention. Would you, would you be looking for a motion at this point?
Well, if we have any other discussion.
Oh, there is one other point. With respect to the bicycle ordinance that was discussed during this resolution, and Janine Bauer has asked me to bring it to the board's attention, that it has since been passed and is now adopted, and what she, her recollection was that during the, just during the hearing, the developer had agreed basically to attempt to comply, even though it had not been adopted yet. So what I'm going to suggest, her suggestion is that we insert phrasing that the developer will attempt to substantially comply with the newly adopted bike ordinance. They had already agreed to add a storage rack in the front, I recall. I think the question was whether, where they were going to put it inside.
They did, if I remember, they said, we may lose one parking space, and I think we pretty much said that was okay, you know, to put the rack in.
So I think that, that language would work well, if you ask them to substantially comply with the newly adopted bicycle ordinance.
Let me go back to this one issue with the tying this spending amount back to our larger COA revision, as opposed to separating it out and getting specific. Is the idea then, in just practical terms, that we're going to recalculate everything and it'll fit, now we'll have a new equation that balances, but this will be part of that new equation? Is that, can we put it in simple...
In a manner of speaking, likely, likely.
So are we asking...
There may be other opportunities to provide for affordable housing that is deed restricted, that was not in the initial plan, that may make sense.
But I guess the question I'm asking specifically is, when we put this new number in the equation, are we coming out with the same balance?
Actually, it may be coming out better.
Better. So what we're asking for them is to bless the whole new arithmetic, and this is just one part of it?
Potentially, yes.
But is that, I think that's a good idea, except I'm concerned about that there's no there there. And what, my real concern is that we're tying this whole development down to an approval by an agency that, for all practical purposes, doesn't exist well, or, you know, and I'm wondering why we're actually worried so much about doing that. We're trying to cover our bases, I imagine, but what are we, I just hope this doesn't shoot us in the foot.
The developer can perceive, you know, his own risk with COA. You know, so if that's the only hold up, oh, the recalculating, that shouldn't hold up the issuance of the permit. The issuance of the permit's subject to whatever the number is at COA's. That shouldn't, again, unless the developer wants to hold it up.
Whatever that number ultimately becomes, as long as the developer agrees to do it, then it's just waiting on the number.
Well, it's no different than if he waits on the number and COA comes in, let's say with an astronomical number or higher than this, and they say, I'm not going to build it. You know, it's up to the developer to decide whether he wants to take that risk or not.
This is, what's required is the minimum. I mean, if COA comes back and says something else, then I guess he's going to be obligated to that something else.
No, the way, the way I interpret the wording, if COA comes back and says it's $120,000, that's what it is. I don't think it's a minimum. Part of the reason I was asking also is that, I'm sorry.
Based on this resolution and the approval, right now, what we're approving is what's required.
Yeah, but the line...
Subject to COA's approval.
Subject to rights.
Right. But we're asking COA to approve this.
No, we're, no, that's the thing. We're not asking COA to approve this, we're asking COA to approve a whole new spending plan.
Well, I mean, as it relates to this, we're just talking to this. We're not asking COA to do that. The village may be asking COA to do that. We're not. This resolution is only pertaining to this particular site. What the village decides is the village to do with their overall spending plan or whatever is something different, but for this site, the 240 is what's required as it stands right now.
Correct.
And hopefully, COA will approve that, based upon the language, you know, that Janine wanted to add in, subject to COA's or whomever's approval at the time.
Ellen, I don't interpret that way. The language that they've added into Paragraph 15, I think COA can override what you're approving here. If they so elect, I don't think they will, but who knows?
The difference is that the only thing that triggers this differently, just from a planning perspective and from what COA has, you have an ordinance on your books that is a development fee ordinance, that would have, except for the fact that there's been a determination of vesting, would have had them pay more. But for, but because of the vesting opinion, they are then subject to that. So it's, so there's this, there's already something regulatory on your books that COA has approved, and COA is, as far as COA is concerned, except for these circumstances that are different, that's what the village is operating under.
So it would never be less than what...
Well, but on the other hand, if it's going to be part of a larger equation, do we really care? I mean, ultimately, only at the end of the day is the village has an acceptable COA equation of spending, and so if this is less than we thought it was going to be, we don't really care. The developer benefits.
Well, except if you think there's a value to affordable housing. I mean, if you do, then having less money for affordable housing is...
Well, we've balanced it somehow, that's why I was asking.
Balance, I mean, you can't, I mean, there are people, there are groups that are more efficient, but honestly, I think there is a point when you are only doing less with less, not more with less or the same with less. So when you say you're going to balance it, what that basically means is, is that, that either you will find a less expensive way of producing the units, or you will do fewer units. you will find a less expensive way of producing the units, or you will do fewer units, period. There's just, that's just simple math. So that's, I mean, if there has been a determination, it's a legal determination that says we have no choice but to accept the 240, because that was what was approved in 2002, then okay. But if I were being, but if this were absent a legal opinion, I would say that we probably would not want to do that. So, because there is a value to having the additional funds for it. I do want to ask one other thing, though. The spending plan, which we've now talked about for a little bit, is that spending plan going to come through the planning board at any point? I know it's approved by the governing body, but does it ever come through the planning board?
We used to have an affordable housing committee on the planning board, and I remember meeting that.
We've never looked at the spending plan. We've never looked at the spending plan, though. I just want to respond to Tom's comment with a slightly different, maybe the other side of the point to what Harold said, and that is, the reason that I have been sort of a stickler on this point, and pressing it to get either an opinion from our Affordable Housing Council, or better, a decision from COA, blessing this one way or the other, or abusing us of the idea that the 240 is okay, particularly because there's some lack of clarity between the spending plan and the old ordinance, and this amount, and so on and so forth, is because we have other projects in the hopper, and if this 240 is okay because it's vested, you know, which there seems to be an agreement amongst council about that, then all we're really doing is, all we're really doing, that could be a complicated matter, but all we're really doing is asking COA to approve it in terms of affordable housing. Because what I'm concerned about is actually not this development. What I'm concerned about is the other developers, who are already seeking reductions in the 20% that we have across the board in the housing plan going forward, having nothing to do with this past developer's agreement, this past approval, and this past amount, you know, which wouldn't be allowed anymore, is, it's just going to add fuel to the fire of, and get us in trouble. We are one of the only 60 municipalities, I think it is, or 68 municipalities in New Jersey of 566, or however many of those are even bothering to comply with COA, 300 or 400, that has substantive certification. So I'll be damned, darned, excuse me, if I mess up any protections that the village has already obtained by not running this 240 by COA. I just think it makes good sense, that's all there is to it. And, you know, I'm sorry it's been delayed this long, I didn't even know about the resolution hanging around till December or January or something, but I just think it's the right thing to do.
Are you recommending that we not vote on this tonight?
Oh, no, I think, Patrick inquired with their council, their council said, that is, the developers' council said, sure, we don't have any objection to a conditional approval, conditioned on COA's approval. All we're doing is sending it down there and saying, hey, look, this is our understanding of where we stand right now. What do you say?
Well, I think that makes good sense. I guess, I was trying to understand what it is that we were doing when we were sending it down, because we're not asking just specifically for them to approve that amount, we're asking them to approve a new blueprint.
Well, that's a different matter.
I just wanted to know, I mean, I don't really have...
Actually, I found out that today, so I know not of that, and I can't address it. But what I called COA's council on Thursday or Friday, George Cohen, he told us who to direct it to at COA. I think Patrick did that today, after we spoke to Jeff Serenian. And all we're asking them to do is to approve this resolution and this amount of money. If they want to take a step back and look at it in the context of something else, then we'll have to blame Susan for that, but, you know, she's used to that.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
If it's okay with the chair, I move that we adopt the resolution as amended, given the revisions described by our council.
Second, we'll do a roll call on that, OJetti?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colton Max?
Yes.
Ms. Foey?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Torpe?
Yes.
And Ms. Guha?
Yes.
Thank you, okay, so that we have a resolution on that. Thanks, Patrick, for your hard work, and Janine. There is another item here, it says, "Board discussion on the 2011 master plan reexamination report." So I will ask Susan Gruel to explain why that's on. Can you, do you have any, can anybody discuss that?
I actually asked that to be...
I asked that to be added, Mr. Chair, because in connection with an application before the zoning board that's pending, there was a planner's report which referred to the master plan reexam report, and in researching it in the secretary's files, we found that the last communication we had with Paul, when we voted, when the board voted to approve that, they made a couple of minor changes that Paul was going to add, and we just wanted to be sure, because we're not sure right now, that those minor changes were actually inserted in the final plan. So I just want to put back on the agenda to make sure we caught up with ourselves.
They were. And I think, Patrick, you have that revised draft. My understanding was the board adopted it subject to...
It did.
And those were made, and those were incorporated in.
So is that the draft, do we know that's online?
That I don't know.
That draft that's online was the last one we received in July.
Why don't we make sure?
I will, I will make sure that we'll coordinate to make sure that whatever is online is what is the adopted plan.
Susan, just to be clear, and, because this was a concern we weren't sure of, does it now have to go to the Board of Trustees to be, have anything to do with this, or it just stays at the planning board end, and that's it?
Well, the planning board is done. The implementation of the recommendations, some of the recommendations would theoretically require ordinance revisions.
Okay, but they don't have to accept the whole document from us or anything? Okay, so then what goes? Okay.
That's reassuring. Thanks, Patrick. Okay, I think that's all we have for tonight. OJetti, when?
I just have one question.
All right, one second. OJetti, when is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is...
May...
May 7.
Do we have any applications pending, or other business that we're aware of?
There's one that came in today, Michael.
Yeah, one came in today for Seton Hall. It was for proposed addition to the athletic building.
The scoreboard?
Huh?
No, it's the big fancy gym thing. The check students.
Anyhow, there is a good reason to believe that there will be a meeting in May, because there is an application, which we will be here.
Just one question. We received a letter from the Board of Adjustment, referring to February 13. Is there anything that we have to do with, other than they had made some suggestions? Is somebody looking into this, or replying to it?
Yes, the Board of Adjustment is required to give an annual report.
I know that.
To the planning board of trustees, to let them know what variance applications they're hearing, and the thinking being, if the Board of Trustees, the governing body sees these use variance applications coming in time after time, and to decide whether or not, yes, we should change that ordinance, or no, we shouldn't change that ordinance, they're supposed to get the report to make that.
No, I understand that. They've made some suggestions and recommendations to the planning board. I mean, are we just putting this in file, or?
No, I think there were a number of recommendations, I'm hoping the governing body won't take up.
No, but he's suggesting that some of those recommendations are for the planning board to take up.
Yeah.
Which one?
Well, I don't, I mean, it's in the letter, their recommendation, but I haven't read them all.
Aren't they ordinance changes for, like, Irvington Avenue and South Orange Avenue, talking about the zoning for those districts?
Yeah, it's talking about frontage, and, you know, things like this, some of the problems that they're running into that may be addressed by our changes. I don't think I want to go through the whole letter, but I assume it's got to take some action, either yea or nay on our part, to say we want to look at this, and change something, or not change something, or...
You want the ordinance committee to make a look?
Might be a good idea. Who is that?
Well, Elliot's not here, so there you go. Dumping on him.
Let's refer that. OJetti, let's make a note, and we'll remind Elliot that he has work to do. We'll ask him for his opinion.
Just one last thing, speaking for Eli. Before Paul left us, he said he was probably...
He didn't die.
No, he was, before he left, he hired a girl. He was going to try and make arrangements to stay on, to complete this one project that we were working on, that was the revision of definitions.
Oh, I'm working on that. I'm already working on it.
Okay, you are. Okay. Answers that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love of Kelly is a full with that.
They're better off, boy.
Yeah, but that's only the part you're...
All right, I think that's it, then we can adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody.
Happy holiday. Have a happy holiday.